Oh, it's time. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. I'm going to call this regular school board meeting for independent school district done for 544 to order. And the first item is to turn to the clerk to establish our form. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Present. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes here. And Stephen Biggessa.
Here.
We have a floor. Very well, and next we'll move on to an motion to approve the agenda, which is before. Would someone make that motion?
It's moved.
All right, and second? Second, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right, and the next item of business, I will defer to superintendent.
All right, good evening. We would like to do a school board recognition week announcement. That's February 21st through the 25th. Thank you to the members of the Ferguson Falls School Board for being strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district, along with establishing policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system. Thank you for devoting your knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren.
Thank you. All that up to our own fine state, too.
Yeah.
Love it in the air. Very well. And next is a resolution on acknowledgements. February 21st through 25th, 2022 is proclaimed School Bus Driver Appreciation Week also in the state of Minnesota by Governor Tim Walz. The Ferguson Falls School District recognizes the invaluable contributions school bus drivers make to public education and student safety, and we extend a sincere thank you for their service. We would also like to say thank you to Sharanjit Singh for the donation to the Otter Angel Account, which is an account created to anonymously assist families that are unable to pay for student meals. Thank you to the Ferguson Falls Gymnastics Academy Incorporated for their donation of approximately $21,263 to be used to purchase equipment for the Ferguson Falls School District Gymnastics Program. I will offer that resolution, move for its adoption, and you may have a second.
A second.
All right, any discussion on the resolution?
I guess a question about the gymnastics academy donation. I thought we practiced over there. Why are they donating stuff here, just out of curiosity?
Two separate entities.
Okay.
And so the.
Oh, the, okay, the academy is the old entity. I see. Right? Is that what you're about to say? Sorry. Okay.
No, that's all right.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, all good. Any other discussion or comments before vote? Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole. Yes. Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Very well, thank you. We'll move on to our board reports, and we'll start with Kirby Anderson.
Yes, nothing from the finance committee today, but on the 544 Foundation Committee. I didn't have a report last, at our last meeting, or last month, because they hadn't met yet. So weird thing now, they've met twice since our last, last report. So we did meet January 13th on Thursday and also February 10th, just last week. And some of us were in Minneapolis for the MSBA convention on the 13th, but Jeff and I were both there on Thursday. And some of the highlights from the 544 Foundation, their total assets right now are approaching 2 million. We probably would be at 2 million right now, but our short-term returns are down right now with the rest of the stock market of the last six weeks or so. Another highlight, scholarship applications are available online and also at the KSS Counseling Office, available for students to fill out. I believe our display cases out here have been cleaned and updated, if anybody's noticed, but that was, has been done last month or so. There was an alumni email that went out in December, and when we keep track of that, we had a 44% open rate, which is like three times the industry standard. So that's, that's a good deal. We are utilizing the 544 Foundation to be our funding conduit for donations for the Roosevelt Project for upgrades. And there have been some discussion about that and how that's being handled, and that's all ironed out. So that's good. And the last thing I have is the planning for the Legends Golf Tournament, which is Friday, July 8th. And that's one of the major fundraisers for the Foundation. And I believe we picked some honorees, but they wouldn't tell us who they were yet because they haven't been contacted. So, so that's moving along, too. I think they had their committee meeting right before we met. And then I think they have a finance meeting, too. So, so a lot going on and good attendance. It was really a nasty day, but they were, the Thursday. And it was one of those blizzard days. And so I think there was five of us in the building, but just about everybody else attended by Zoom, so it worked out good. So that's all I have, unless somebody, unless Jeff, you have any other questions?
I'll see.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirby.
Go ahead.
Next, we'll do my board reports. And the Special Education Cooperative met today at noon, and we accepted the resignation of the current director, Shannon Erickson. And that position's been posted, and we'll close on March 1st. We talked today about a steering committee to guide the interview questions process, et cetera, et cetera. And so that is a bit of a work in progress. And that was the primary objective of today's meeting. We, Director Erickson did note that the law, educational laws from COVID has caused a fair amount of parents to seek special education services for their children, which may or may not be warranted. It wouldn't be perhaps an educational need so much as, as just generally catching up on, on the other things that they've missed. So they are constantly scrutinizing that. And that, yeah, that was a prime, primary objective there. The Region One Joint Powers Board meeting that at the end of January, we had reelection of officers, and we revised the budget so that it matches where our finances are. I just think that's kind of cool, because then by the end of the year, you're, you're always right, pretty much. And then we, of note, I thought, was that we did revise policy to reflect mobile working. And, and they're a little different entity than, than a usual school district. So, but nonetheless, it needed to be updated to accommodate for the possibility of, of working from home. So that was about it there. Activities, we'll have to delegate that report to someone else in the future, so. All right, any questions for me?
I do have one question, just on the special education for requests. Did she say, is it parents requesting, or is it teachers requesting that students get?
I, I thought she was indicating the parents were requesting that review for services. Is that?
I took it as a combination.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just been, and we did approve hiring of an extra early childhood special education teacher because of the developmental delays for the zero to three-year-olds that are becoming more obvious as well. So is there quite a bit of a backlog in testing? She indicated that, yeah, we had a represent, one of the staff that holds that position came to last month's meeting and indicated that, that it was really, business was movement and more than she could handle. And so then today, we added a supplemental person for next year and projecting that we're going to continue to see that, so.
On the activities, I think we need to, I think I volunteered for that, did I not?
Yes.
So we can change that on future agendas to move that one up into my category.
So you want 544 Foundation finance?
Finance and activities, yeah.
Activities, okay. Perfect.
I'll visit with you later tonight.
Great.
What I have to do to, I forgot about it.
Oh. We have all the babies smiling.
Thank you.
Is that me, you, and?
Matt.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, very well. But you're leaving the reporting.
Correct. Yep, 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 yep. And I'll, I'll, yeah.
All right. Next, board reports will come from Missy Hermes.
Okay, let me start with Staff Development Committee. And at that meeting, we met on Monday, February 7th. And there's quite a bit to talk about. First of all, the budget now, which had built up over time because we were unable to send people to staff development, is now down to a manageable level. There's about $2,500 left in that to go through. I think in June is when it will, starts over again. But some of the things that we talked about at the February 7th, first of all, there was a review of the, well, two of the speakers that we've had in January and then last Friday have been on project-based learning. So remember, this is one of the goals of the school district that we've asked teachers to implement, project-based learning, and that every semester, a teacher's class would, the students would create a project to demonstrate their learning. And so we've had different guest speakers now for staff development days, helping teachers that, because we have teachers that have already started doing this, implementing this, but now some that are looking for some ideas. So we had a guest speaker in January, and her, she was from Breckenridge. And then on Friday, we had Dr. Lori Elliott, who flew in from Missouri to present on, on project-based learning, too. And I don't know if everybody got them, but her handouts that she had created for that workshop were fantastic. And I hope, and if you get a chance to look at those, I, I encourage you to do so. Now we have another staff development day coming up in March. That's on March 25th. And that would be more of a typical staff development day where a variety of different workshops are offered so that teachers can choose what is something that interests them especially. And so some of the topics that are going to be offered on March 25th are trauma-informed practice, or ACEs, how to address that, suicide awareness, QRP, and QRP stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer, secondary trauma and self-care, fetal alcohol syndrome disorder. And then also, there are going to be several presenters from the Regional Centers of Excellence. And they are going to be presenting on social-emotional learning and activities that teachers can use in the classroom and how to integrate that with your academic instruction. Introduction to Restorative Practices, building resilience for staff. So a little bit of self-care, too. And also culturally-relevant pedagogy. And then also, there's going to be a workshop on student engagement. And teachers have noticed a difference post-COVID on, and difficulty in engaging students. And we've already discussed how important it is for teachers to have, you know, to have that relationship with their students. So these are all things that'll be offered. And also, I think, how to implement ISTI standards, or ONE ISTI standard, into a project-based learning project. And so just a reminder, ISTI stands for International Society of Technology and Education. So I wouldn't say killing two birds with one stone. That's kind of the idea there, getting both of those things done. Okay. Long report, sorry.
Oh, but that's really dense with.
Well, you know what? That committee is working really hard. They really are.
Yeah.
To offer things that are relevant to our educators and peers. I should notice that, note that, too, that our, it's not just certified staff that are able to come. We encourage the non-certified staff to take part in these workshops, too. Speakers.
On the project-based learning sessions, the speaker you talked about, she gave it three times, and then she had follow-up sessions with each group that day. So I think they, every, every group, I think it was the BSS, and then it was the.
Middle school and elementary.
And so I sat in with the kindergarten, and I, I think the handouts were good. But I think what's even better is she gave us a link to her, all of her resources, all of her workbooks and all of her examples. I mean, there's a ton of stuff out there. And so that's, that's probably even more valuable.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because we asked her to do that because in the past, maybe we've had speakers, like when we had differentiated instruction, and people in certain grade levels said, well, that didn't apply to me.
Right.
And so this way, by asking her to do that, she could apply it for K, was it K through three? Or two?
K four.
K four.
Okay, and then.
K four applied eight, and then.
Middle school and then high, high school. So that was important.
Right, so she ended up doing each of the sessions three times. Plus she, and also, I think we got an email today. They're, they're available on video, too, if you want. Because I'd leave early, so I'm going to try and catch the rest of that. But, but then she did a follow-up, so it was more of a Q and A thing, interacted with each group afterwards, also.
And I know that the IQ Academy teachers are offered that option to view those videos online. So I'm not sure if that's an option for other staff that weren't able to be there that day.
I thought it was a good deal. You, you were there, too.
Thought she was outstanding.
Yeah.
And I know that there was an opportunity to have lunch with her, too, if you wanted to. And so some of the staff took advantage of that, and just visit with her, maybe. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I have policy, too. You thought I was done, but no.
I know. Policy now.
You're just getting started.
Yes, that's right. So remember that we adopted policies back in September, and we adopted policies 102, 406, 413, 425, 501, 515, and 524. All of those were required by us, our school district, to look at them every year. And we still have two that we haven't, that are still required, 503 and 507. And then we still haven't gotten, right, 417 and 418, which are policies related to chemical abuse and abuse and drug-free, a drug-free workplace. And we already have policies related to that. But remember how with vaping, the policies were, it was added that you couldn't just say to students, no vaping, vaping is bad. You had to also adopt a telling why, and if you are vaping, now what can you do? How to, and so there additional, there are, the legislature has required additional information on not just vaping, but other chemical abuse and abuse and a drug-free workplace. So that still isn't ready yet. We haven't gotten that yet, but that's coming down the road. So here, the policies that we did, that we are offering you tonight are on page four of your packet that you have. So a lot of these are, again, these are policies that are, the legislature requires us to look at every year. For example, the family medical leave policy, harassment and violence, bullying policy, nondiscrimination, and so on. And we have had long discussions on a lot of these policies and long meetings, haven't we? So there's the list that you have for tonight. Family medical leave, harassment and violence, mandated reporting of child neglect, or physical or sexual abuse, mandated reporting, amount treatment of vulnerable adults. There weren't many, there weren't really any changes on those.
And you might just want to add about the student dress code and the meal policy.
We are still working on that. And also, a policy we had in the past called Meal Account Policy. And that wording has changed, so look for that to come up, and it'll be called School Meals Policy. So in the, it'll be addressing things like meal shaming and things like that.
Count management.
So I hope you'll approve our policies that we.
You endorse approval. I do.
Okay.
And tonight's just a, there's no approval needed. It's just a recognition that the annual meeting has been made.
That's taken place.
All right. Anything else? Okay, very well, move on to Natalie Knutson.
Well, I'll grant my time to Missy tonight. My wellness report is minimal. There's, there's nothing to report. We haven't met since the last time we met. And then Buildings and Grounds hasn't formally met, but there's movement that's going to be starting out on the Lincoln School. And so we're going to be approving some of those agreements tonight. And then there's some discussions happening more prevalent about the kitchen over at the ALC, or the cafeteria. So what, what is that going to end up looking like? So there's a lot of little moving pieces, but nothing specific to report on tonight.
Thank you. Matthew Lemke.
Okay, Lakes Country Service Co-op Board, we met on last Thursday. And for the most part, it was more of a business meeting. We had to elect officers and do our approvals, just like we do at the beginning. Because this is the first time we've met in the new year, so it was kind of one of those. And then had to do some adoption on insurance. And a couple of things just to note. There's an admission policy that we have for Lakes Country Service Co-op. Basically, some protection for, I think, for the board and for, or offered people within executive branch and stuff like that. And even for Lakes Country, Lakes Country Service Co-op. They said that a lot of the, for whatever reason, a lot of the E and Os are coming back, like at 23% increases in premiums. And I don't know why per se, unless there's just a lot of things happening out there that I'm not aware of, or whatever, that are taking place. But ours did not go up that much. It went up only by like 7%. So, but they said they're seeing some pretty high increases in, in, in that policy. The other thing that was interesting is, again, is that Lakes Country Service Co-op has their, they're part of a pool. And in August, and I think this would probably be with everybody's health insurance pool, is in October and November and December, but in particular, October and November, they've seen the highest amount of claims they've seen in like 15 to 16 years. And it's just because people are finally starting to go back to the doctors. And they just, or they, you know, waiting on surgeries or whatever. And so people are finally going back. And so, of course, and there's this high usage. And they just said that, yeah, it was as high as they've ever seen in about 15 or 16 years. It was that high. So it's just kind of an interesting thing to see. So that's why I have a report for Lakes Country Service Co-op. For the Minnesota School Board, they did meet Thursday, February 3rd. And again, it was a pretty just business-like meeting. There wasn't a whole lot of things that they were passing that are too noteworthy. One thing that they did pass that I thought was, that they're working on, and this is coming from the college level, is, again, they're working with the staff and then legal counsel, presenting information on the recent changes to profiting from individual names, images, and likenesses with, while considering an amateur. So they're trying to work out for the high school league for people being able to profit off their image and things, and what can and cannot be done. And so they're working on, so it sounds like they're going to have additional discussion in April at the board meeting and a potential passage of a policy, board policy, in June. So it's just kind of a trickle-down from the college level. It's coming down now to the high school level. So basically, that if, if a company wants to use your name, that they could profit, that you could actually profit from it. And then how does that affect your status with the Minnesota High School League and things like that? So it's kind of a slippery slope, I think, in some ways. But anyway, it's going to be interesting to see how this is going. Not at the college level, and now it's going to the high school.
Well, what if, would it cover, too, if, if our school wants to put on social media saying, and with an image like we have been of, of student athletes, and say, come tonight, because, and we're selling tickets.
Correct.
Is that, are those students, then, does that qualify as profiting from using a student image?
I think that's what the, I think that's part of the discussion and the, the policy.
Does, does that cover like school store sweatshirts and things like that? I mean.
I don't think it's anything to do, anything that the Minnesota High School League saw you, you'd be your co-curricular, and then your arts, things of that, nature's speech, things of that. Anything that, you know, somebody would want to use a person's likeness to advertise something?
Oh, so I could assign that contract to have my picture on the ding-dongs.
Absolutely. So anyway.
Don't you think it's more of a, like, you had a, like a really superstar athlete playing basketball, and he's, he or she is considering skipping college and going right into the pros? Well, and so everybody's after that person. And as are the advertisers, they want to get it. Or say you have Tiger Woods' son, who's like 13 years old, is already a great golfer. He was in our school, and he's on our golf team. That'd be great for our golf team. But if he's profiting from his image, selling Nike or selling something else, I think that's kind of where a lot of that comes from, comes from, too.
I would believe so, but I'm not 100%. Like I said, all I know is what they, they talk, it's very vague. I mean, when they talk about this stuff, it's very vague within the minutes itself. And so, and since they do not record their meetings.
Yeah, still.
They still do not record their meetings. They have not come to 21st century yet. They don't know how. And so they're working on it.
Oh, yeah.
They don't want people to see their meetings.
Exactly.
Let's be honest.
I know. But anyway, so.
They want to make sure that people from outstate Minnesota don't come to their meetings.
I'm not going to go there, but anyway. So I don't exactly know everything they're trying to cover. I just know that at the college level, it's been, you know, worked through. And I know that even like football, in particular, football players, since I just hear it more this fall, because they're talking about it, about what you can and can't do, you know, what, what's legal, what's not, stuff like that. And it could be kind of an interesting high school level of, well, you need a lawyer, and, you know. It could be kind of complicated.
Do you have an indication what direction the high school league is leaning as they review all that?
I think they'll follow the college. I do. I think it'll be, and you can profit off it. Just like, you know, somebody's going to go pro. You may have hockey players that they go, they decide to go.
Junior's.
Yeah. And go, they decide to go that route. Then all of a sudden, it kind of filter into something different, so.
Okay.
That's my report.
Any other questions or comments from that? And then for Stephen, meet and confer and curriculum review.
Great. And then legislative is no longer a thing.
It's no longer a thing, yeah.
Meet and confer, did not meet and confer. For the curriculum review, this is back on the 17th of January, where we talked about the, the two curriculums that we're presenting was English and FIED. So the English, I guess the overview, they talked about their new Wonders program that, that they're using. This is K6. They like the program. It includes other things like SEL every week, and has some lessons on that. It's a program that allows a little bit more free-thinking, not as much as instruction. It offers some differentiation for, for folks, for kids who are achieving higher or lower. So they like that. Has an SEL component, so it's really kind of hitting a lot of areas of, of kids that they, you know, it's, it's all kind of a nice complete package. Let's see, for seven to 12, they've, they've included, you know, to, to meet ISTI standards, they've included digital citizenship into their, one of their focuses. One thing I found interesting is that they no longer do AR for seven, eight, grade seven, eight, and nine. They still test with the same testing, the STAR test, which measures their reading ability. But instead of the, the AR, and I guess there's, people are kind of split on whether AR is effective at these grades. But instead, they're more, it's more of a year-long reading challenge. It's more casual. They're encouraged to take a book that they. a book that they've read and answer, uh, instead of, you know, AR is more of a, a quantity base. Like you take a, you read a book and you answer an online questionnaire about the book to prove that you read the book. But that's facts about the books. But what they're doing now is how are we using critical thinking? Like, what do you think this character's motivation was for doing whatever? Or, um, and I, I think it's interesting, uh, because that's, that's a life skill, right? It's not just memorizing a bunch of facts about a book and hoping to get a score that, that passes. Um, so they're doing these little one-page reports. It's just more thoughtful reflection. Um, so I thought that was a very interesting, um, you know, take for, for AR in those grades. And they're still keeping AR for the younger kids. Um, I still see a benefit in that. Um, let's see. Let's see, at the high school level, I mean, they're, they're adding some new classes next year, which I, I find, um, interesting. It's workplace communication. So public speaking, writing, technical writing. Um, they're adding a children's literature course for, for college credit, which could be kind of fun. And, um, let's see, I'm, that's about it for English for now that I can, um, report on, I guess. So for the FIED, um, just kind of a rundown of how they work it with every grade. So K through four gets twenty-five minutes a day in their, for, for PD. Um, they, uh, in Cleveland, one of the interesting things, they raised about ninety-five hundred dollars for the American Heart Association, which is kind of cool. Um, they, they make it a lot of fun. They have bowling, they have juggling, they have cup stacking, you know, things just to keep them engaged. They, they focus a lot on sportsmanship etiquette, on how to take care of your equipment. Um, middle school, they start, uh, they do seventh and eighth grade, um, every other day. Uh, for gym, they're starting to introduce things like swimming, the weight room. Um, you know, with the swimming, they learn different strokes and things like that. Uh, high school, uh, the FIED requirement is to have two credits to graduate. Um, there, there's, it's, there's a lot of, uh, they're kind of elective-y type things like lifetime sports, um, personal fitness, that they, you can do strength training, where you kind of wear skills to keep healthy. Um, social dance is, is a popular one. Um, and, uh, on the health side of things, um, the first to third graders, the teachers kind of handle the, uh, the curriculum. Uh, the one that they're using right now is called The Great Body Shop. And it comes in the form of a magazine. Teachers like it because it's just, it's done. It's just a lesson that they can present without a whole lot of prep work. Um, and, uh, when you look at the, like the, the older kids taking health, one thing I found interesting is that, um, they take, is it one semester of health through high school? One semester of health. And these are the topics they cover in one semester. Eating disorders, stress, addictions, AIDS, self-esteem, refusal, uh, skill, refusal skills, uh, like how to say no, mental health, uh, first aid, nutrition, emotions, coming up. And this is in one semester. So they're just like cramming everything into this one semester. And, um, they say it's hard, but they get through it. But, um, I just find it interesting that there's so little requirement, just one semester on, on that. So, um, I don't know, maybe something down the road to review. As, especially with COVID, the pandemic, we've seen much more focus on mental health issues and things like that. I don't know. I just thought that was interesting. Um, let's see, I don't have much more to report on that. Um, that's about the gist of the meeting. Anything that I missed? And I know that next curriculum meeting is, uh, Chrissy Sullivan's going to be going over the gifted and talented, um, changes that they've made. And I'm going to be missing it. I'm going to be up in ours. Um, but maybe I can get my life to go instead. But, uh, that's about it for my reports.
All right. Any questions for Stephen?
No, we're not, we're not doing the legislative thing anymore, but I don't know if y'all noticed, are we continuing to get those MSBA, the latest legislative news like we got today yesterday? I thought that was really cool. And they have the bill tracker. They have the community updates. They have, you know, talking about the cost subsidies and special ed and things like that. So I mean, if we get that, I mean, that's, I hope we continue to get that all the time.
Yeah, I mean, that was part of the impetus in not having that be a board report, is that we all get that information?
Right. I think we just got the first one yesterday or today. Okay.
And then.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, okay.
Um, on the FIED side, do they talk anything about the heart monitors? Are they using them anymore or not using them or?
You know, it's funny, I wrote that question down and I think I forgot to ask it.
Okay.
When they were, um, which I thought that was really cool because I didn't, I mean, personally, I didn't know anything about heart rate until I was more than adult. But if, uh, because I think what it is, it's a screen that they wear the monitor and then you have to keep your heart rate above a certain level, a bit of time to stay active. Um, I'm assuming they're using those still because I know that, you know, my kids use them, but I, I forgot to ask that question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope.
All right. We'll move on to Superintendent Drake for a report.
All right. First of all, Happy Valentine's Day. This is as fluffy as it gets. Uh, I want to just, uh, express on behalf of the district, our appreciation to Minnesota Motors. Uh, they sponsored another, uh, free ticket night for multiple events here about a week and a half ago. Uh, it's just a really generous gift to the district and to our students and our community. So, um, very, very generous. Uh, we had, uh, National School Counseling Week, uh, last week and appreciate all the work that our school counselors do, both, uh, at KSS and also through IQ. And especially it's a good time to recognize them because as semesters turn over, uh, each year, uh, for the first week to ten days, most school counselors are inundated with students wanting to tweak their schedules here or there. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about some of the great things happening with our kids tonight. Erica Lottie is, uh, one of five thousand students and one of only forty students in Minnesota, uh, that is being, um, considered for a U.S. Presidential Scholar candidate. Um, and of the forty students in Minnesota, only two were from outstates. So, uh, congratulations to Erica, uh, just to be considered is a really nice, uh, piece of recognition. And, uh, thanks to our staff because that certainly has not happened without, uh, the support of teachers and counselors and, uh, other folks working for, uh, our organization along the way. Uh, we also had a, um, region for spelling bee winner. So congratulations to Halen Laplante. And Halen is only in fifth grade. Uh, so that makes us especially remarkable. Uh, she, this young lady is going to be a force to be reckoned with, uh, in future spelling bees. So, uh, she will go on to compete in the state spelling bee on February twenty-second. Uh, we also have some new royalty in the district, uh, at the, uh, start of snow, uh, our snow week. Uh, Snowball King is Luke Schroeder and Queen is Rebecca Mortensen. Uh, and they, uh, happen to have coordinating, uh, tie and dress. So I thought that was especially impressive. Uh, but, uh, I think the week went really well. Uh, the weather was a little tough, uh, Thursday afternoon and they had some outdoor activities. Uh, but I think everything went, um, really nice. And I appreciate Mr. Tilke, uh, and the student councils, uh, worked to organize that week. Um, just a reminder, we did postpone the dance, uh, because our COVID numbers were, uh, quite high at the time and we needed to make that decision in January because of our relationship with the, uh, uh, company playing the music, our DJ. So, uh, that will be coming up. Uh, Ben Swanson, shifting to the sports side, set a Ferguson Falls boys hockey all-time record, uh, for wins by a goalie with thirty-six. So congratulations to him. And we have a Nordic skier, uh, David Ronavick, uh, who's qualified for the state Nordic skiing meet. So congratulations to David. Uh, this is now playoff season. I think, um, we had Nordic skiing now. Um, gymnastics, I think, had their, just finished their section meet. Um, girls hockey is, uh, next on the docket. Um, then we'll have boys hockey and swimming and diving, uh, and then boys and girls basketball. So things will be ramping up here, uh, full, full tilt on the, uh, uh, section tournament scene and state, state tournaments. Uh, this is another nice accolade for our district, uh, but Scott Cumberall, uh, will be taking his fifth-grade band down to the Minnesota Music Educators Conference. And, uh, that will be coming up here, uh, next week. Uh, and he will be giving, giving a demonstration of how he works with his fifth graders in a typical, um, band rehearsal day. So, um, very nice honor for our music department. Uh, this is something I wanted to share with you. This is, uh, an offshoot of our strategic plan. And this came out of our curriculum committee. Uh, we had talked about setting, uh, some money aside so that we could, uh, bring some elementary art, uh, back in, uh, to the school buildings. Uh, so this is Sarah Ronavick. Um, and, uh, she is, uh, doing a lesson with our students there in, um, second grade. And, uh, they've got lots of smiles on their faces. And, uh, she will be working with several other additional, uh, classrooms on some art projects. And one of the offshoots of this that I really was excited about is that they're displaying these, uh, pieces of artwork at the Mill Street residence. So, uh, really a nice piece there. Uh, another positive thing is, uh, this is the best week in terms of COVID numbers we have seen in a long, long time. So, uh, we had five cases today, but that was over, um, a little bit of an extended weekend. Uh, I'm hoping that, uh, we are firmly on the downhill path. Uh, if we have another good, uh, day of numbers, uh, tomorrow, I'm, uh, I'm going to let the staff know that in, uh, meetings in the future, they can have mass optional. That will be at their discretion, I think. I think we've seen the worst of it not come with. Uh, and then I want to finish up, uh, just talking about Dr. Lori Elliott. And just a very brief reflection back on why project-based learning. Um, we are asking all teachers to embed, uh, some, uh, some project-based learning into their, um, instruction next year. And the reason why is that it stems from our, uh, strategic plan and our portrait of a graduate and twenty-first century learning skills or employability skills. And it lends itself very, very well to all those skills, uh, teamwork, communication, problem solving, resilience, uh, all those kinds of things. And, um, uh, Dr. Elliott, I thought, knocked it out of the park. Uh, she was engaging. Um, she was practical. Uh, she gave lots of examples and examples that were pertinent at each, uh, grade level. Um, and we look forward, I, I think we'll probably be working, uh, with Dr. Elliott in the future again. So, um, appreciate, uh, her coming up all the way from Missouri. Uh, the only downside to the day was our weather. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you might have.
Just look back at your weeklys. Um, three weeks ago, we had ninety-nine cases in the district. Um, two weeks ago, thirty-six. Last week was fourteen. And like I say, your, your five cases today was a four-day number, basically, because it's Friday, Saturday Sunday. So, yeah, definitely a good trend.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Drake. We'll move on to our general consent items, where we'll consider for approval the minutes from January twenty-fourth board meeting and some treasures report, which we'll learn more about from Kermit Anderson.
Yes, Missy and I sat in with Blake this afternoon and we reviewed the, the fund balance and, um, we're still looking good. We are in good shape financially. Um, we did, we looked at, uh, year over year from, uh, this will be this, January is actually the seventh year of our, of our fiscal year. So we're just over halfway through. And, uh, we're tracking a, a little bit ahead of, of grand total, about five, five hundred thousand dollars over in the grand total, a little more than that just in the general fund. And of course, food service continues to do well. And, uh, community ed is, uh, is, uh, building back up again also after our, our one-time transfer that we took out. On the, uh, on the bills, we registered, we reviewed the bill register, register. And, uh, we did have a substantial number of bond payments that went out. Um, so a lot of, a lot of cash flowing through, lot, a lot, a large number of, uh, small payments for referees, uh, activities-based things. So, uh, number of those. Some of the more substantial numbers we're seeing, uh, no surprise, uh, snow removal. We had one, uh, one for fifteen thousand and a little while later we had another for several thousand dollars. So a lot of snow removal. We had, uh, I think our pickup plow broke down and so we had a four thousand hour bill to fix that, that pickup. Um, some other, uh, highlights, uh, uh, we got, uh, forty-four hundred in, uh, Lincoln for, uh, for this, for the Lincoln School, for the, uh, lunchroom. And, uh, eleven hundred dollars, uh, for maintenance on the chiller. We'll talk more about the chiller tonight, but yeah, maintenance going on there. Um, what else you got? Um, gas bills. Uh, we do have natural gas through Constellation and also through Great Plains. And I asked Blake and he said, yes, our gas bills are considerably higher than last year. Not, maybe not as much as what some, some people have seen on there. It's over fifty-two hundred percent in some residential and commercial accounts. But, uh, we have, uh, haven't seen quite that, that much of an increase, but certainly higher than last year with the, with the cold weather as well. Um, ten thousand six hundred, we did have to replace some doors in the wrestling room. Um, we had doors there that, when they were locked, they weren't really locked. So, uh, I mean, that's, that, that problem has been, been solved. Um, hopefully some of the things that were happening there won't happen there anymore. Um, the music trip, uh, we did, uh, cut a check for twenty-four thousand to, uh, leisure time tours. And, uh, I think, again, that's mostly a pass through, isn't it? That's, a lot of the funds are raised. Um, I hope that that goes through okay. Thanks. Um, twenty-five hundred to ATS and R for the Cleveland facility study. Again, another six thousand dollars in the snowplowing, um, that I mentioned earlier. Uh, we did get a couple of late bills in food service, um, for about forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand dollars. It was more of a timing thing with, uh, emails and spam and things like that that happened. Um, let's see, what else? Retrofit lighting, forty-five thousand. I think KSS is now done with the retrofit lighting. Uh, there's about a three-year payback on most of the retrofit lighting that we're doing with the rebates from Rytokar. So we'll be looking at Cleveland and, and the rest of the buildings and hoping to complete all of the retrofit lighting this, right into this summer. Um, about ten thousand dollars went out for hockey jerseys. And we have that as a pass through from the boosters. And we found out, we learned today, Missy and I learned that we buy jerseys every couple of years and we rotate different sports, get different jerseys every few years as they wear out. Um, textbooks, the Hillcrest, um, again, a pass through. Um, and some network services things, some, some hardware and some, uh, labor things for things that, that need to be fixed. And then about forty thousand dollars in, in the chromebooks. So, yeah, so pretty, pretty good. Lot of, lot of detail, a lot of dollars gone through, but nothing, I don't know, nothing really out of the ordinary. So thank you, Blake. Missy, any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. We will turn to our HR Director, Elaine Johnkey, for the personnel.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we basically have retirements and resignations on our agenda for tonight. So under certified staff retirements, we have Richard Rizgrub, Denise Wies, and Rebecca Pierce, um, resolutions down in the new business. Um, they total of fifty-six years of teaching experience in our district, those three. So Rebecca Pierce has been on the leave of absence of this past current year. Um, and now will be, um, fully retiring, um, at the end of this school year. Support staff resignation, we have Joy Larson, Special Ed Para at Adams. And then our support staff retirement, um, Ricky Wasvik. And everyone pretty much knows Ricky Wasvik. He's been in our district for nineteen years here at Kennedy Secondary School. So, uh, walked the halls for a long time and, um, very friendly, uh, individual that we'll miss here too. Uh, he'll be, his last workday is the end of April. So we'll be looking for a custodian to fill issues. So I, and then the last piece is the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-three agreement between ISD five forty-four and the Ferguson Principals Association. Um, they settled their contracts. So I would, uh, recommend these all for, for approval.
Okay. Um, any discussion on the general consent items? All right. Did you have the motion ready?
I don't think we did. No.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the general consent items.
All right. Thank you. In a second. All right, thank you, and a second?
Second.
All right, and any discussion on, on any of these items? Principal settled in cohesion with the teaching staff, is that?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Okay. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And that is a pass. We'll move on to new business, and I, and look for a motion to endorse the acceptance of a letter of intent from the City of Fergus Falls to purchase the Roosevelt chiller system. Would somebody make that motion? All right, and is there a second?
Second.
And would somebody let off the cannon for a big boom?
See the horizon on the...
Maybe.
The letter was in our packet, any discussion?
It's been signed up on the city.
Yeah, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. Looking for a motion to approve the agreement between the school district and R.A. Morton and Associates for the interior build out of the site improvements for Lincoln School. Would someone make a motion to accept that agreement?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Looking for a motion to agree, to approve the agreement between our school district and ATSNR, the architectural firm that we have been courting, to provide ongoing architectural or engineering services for the chiller plant and other various projects as requested. Would someone make a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor of, oh, any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, and then next, looking for a motion to approve the pupil transportation agreement between our school district and Otter Tail Coaches. Will make that motion. All right, thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the agreement with Otter Tail Coaches? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved as well. I pause to note that, that those contracts represent a great deal of work by the business manager and Super Denne, it really is nice to have them on the agenda for approval at last. Very good, thank you. That's my Valentine's Day.
And just so you know, the sale of the chiller was yours to me.
Something about this, this is going to be the end of me, I remember that quote.
It's not that the chiller's bad, it's just been very complicated.
It's been complicated.
Just the balancing act.
Yes.
I got it.
We will take no action, but by virtue of having this in our new business, note that we've done the annual review per MSBA school board policies on the listed policies on the agenda, and Ms. Hermes gave a review of that in her report. Moving on, I'm going to read a resolution on the retirement of Richard Rizbrough. Whereas Richard Rizbrough began his employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in July 2005, and whereas Richard has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for 17 years, and whereas Richard has been a dedicated science teacher for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Richard Rizbrough for 17 years of service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer that resolution, we'll put it through.
All right, and a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, to you, Clerk. Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lim?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. We have a resolution on the retirement of Denise Weiss. Whereas Denise Weiss began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 1989, whereas Denise has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for 33 years, and where, whereas Denise has been a dedicated instrumental music teacher for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Denise Weiss for her 33 years of service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. I'll offer that resolution. All right, and a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limpy?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. We have a resolution on the retirement of Rebecca Pierce, whereas Rebecca Pierce began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 1980, and again in August 2017, whereas Rebecca has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for six years, whereas Rebecca has been a dedicated special education teacher for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls Public Schools to thank Rebecca Pierce for her six years of service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limpy?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. We have a resolution on the retirement of Ricky Wasvik, whereas Ricky Wasvik began his employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in January 2003, whereas Ricky has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for 19 years, whereas Ricky has been a dedicated custodian for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School District to thank Ricky Wasvik for his 19 years of service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limpy?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. And next, I'll seek a motion to close the school board for a session as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13B03, to discuss negotiation strategies related to the district's negotiations with the Finance Director and the Superintendent of Schools. And who would be willing to make that motion?
Me.
Missy Hermes?
Missy Hermes?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor of closing the session for personnel matters, or negotiation strategies or other, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are now in a closed session beginning at 6:12 PM.